All right, welcome to the Berlin Select Board Open Meeting that we will be sharing with finance in a little bit. Today is Monday, July fifteenth, calling the meeting to order at six thirty. This is an open session, public meetings are subject to being recorded, they are recorded and your image and voice will be recorded. Before we start, I just want to say that I'm waiting for a personal text. So if you see me pick up the phone, I'm glad to share and show that it's about a bee keeper.
Yeah, I was wondering if you could see that.
Oh, see, I didn't think that it was coming till Friday. So if I pick up my phone, that's why. All right, so let's get it up. So we have first up on the agenda is the approval of minutes for June third, tenth and seventeenth, because I don't think that the twenty-fourth is available.
Correct. So I had a couple of questions and probably typos and changes or whatever.
Okay.
You ready?
Yep.
Okay. On June third, the flip circus under B. It says something like sign, S I N E, discussion. What is that?
I don't know.
I don't either. Here's the French way of spelling sign.
I'll take it out.
Wee wee.
Wee, you'll fix it, whatever.
Yeah, I'll fix it.
Make it make it make sense?
Yes.
Then under motion. I think that there's two sentences, one's sort of in the middle and one's at the end. And I think they need to be combined.
Okay.
I had asked about the sending an email to the Sunnys about the canoe launch and whether the old liquor store will be demolished.
I can make those two sentences.
Okay.
Yeah.
What were you doing when you were doing this?
My lips are sealed.
And then on the tenth, we're doing these all at once. I think it says somewhere in there, probably the last big paragraph at the end, it says Finance Director Schultz. So.
Stop them promoted.
I know. The Finance Chair.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And that was it.
Thank you.
So do you want me, I'll make the motion with those changes to approve?
I'll second.
All right, motion is second, already had lots of discussion, all those approve poll?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, next up, general public comment. All right, not seeing any, so we will move down, we're just a few minutes late on our public hearing for the poll petition, so. Lenny, we will bring you up and before we do, let me open the public hearing. For that, public hearing notice under the provisions of the General Laws of Massachusetts, Chapter one sixty-six. And any additions or amendments thereto, please be advised that a meeting on Monday, July fifteenth at six thirty P M. The Berlin Select Board will consider a request to give permission to Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Inc. to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the public way. Central Street, National Grid to install one J O pole on Central Street, beginning at a point approximately zero feet northeast at the center line of the intersection of Central Street and Sawyer Hill Road and continuing approximately two hundred and seventy feet in a northeast direction. Installing one J O pole approximately two hundred and seventy feet northeast of the intersection of the Sawyer Hill Road and Central Street at the driveway of two hundred Central Street. Location approximately as shown on the attached plan, the petition can be found on the town website under news slash announcements as posted with this public hearing notice. If you have any questions, you can contact the Select Board at nine seven eight eight three eight two four four two. This meeting will be held in a hybrid format, so officially opening the hearing at six thirty-four. Okay, good, you got everything?
Did you want to vote to open it or you're just gonna?
Do, are we supposed to?
Are we supposed to vote, okay? Can I get a motion to vote to open it? And no, you make one in the close. I asked for it.
So move or second or whatever step will allow us to move forward.
Okay.
Same thing.
All right, so we are open, so Lenny, Lenny, thank you for joining us, how are you this evening?
I'm good, how about you, good evening?
Very well, thank you, so talk to us about your poll.
So we have a pole located on our customer's farm, there he would like it removed, there was no easement for it, so we're moving it for him off of his property onto the town right of way.
There any issues, concerns that people have? Sent to you Dee or Kristen or anything like that?
No, no.
All right, any comment, oh Scott?
Sorry, normally with these, we, I'm usually seeing like a map with an X on it somewhere, because.
It's on the bottom of the.
Oh, I thought I scrolled up and down and I went to the website.
It's even in the yellow folder, if you want to just open it.
Yeah, the yellow folder is going to be better. I just like what corner of that intersection and then it's going to run for a while or they'll be. Why didn't you see it on the stage?
Oh, it's attached to the.
Notice.
Notice, so yeah.
So it's going to be on the side of Sawyer Hill.
Opposite of Sawyer, the north Sawyer Hill.
Is there just moving a pole a little bit, so you're taking out a pole and adding a pole?
Correct.
Right, you just only need permissions to add poles because remove poles, people tend not to oppose, okay?
Yes.
Any public questions? Anyone on, joining us via hybrid, you have any questions? Nope, seeing no hands?
No hands.
Okay. Is there a motion to support? The addition of the of the pole?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, can I get a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing closed at six thirty-seven P M. All right, Lenny, I think you're good to go.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Awesome, you have a great night.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
All right.
Still looking for it online, but like, since I found the piece of paper, it'll be fine.
All right, so next up on our agenda is to discuss and potentially vote on an application for a one day special pouring license submitted by J. Paul Favue on behalf of the Crystal Club Charity to be utilized at a charity golf event at the Berlin Country Club on August tenth, twenty twenty-four.
So. I would make a motion to approve.
I would second.
And we're all good Dee, no one came back and said?
Everything is fine, if this is a longstanding annual event.
Correct.
Yep.
And everyone said so.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, and I, so moved, all right.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Under General Department Updates, we have a surprised guest this evening that might be a little antsy. I was wondering if we might be able to, before Kathy gives her report, introduce our special guest?
Absolutely.
I forget how you get the special guest on camera.
Oh, we'll get her on camera. Oh, yeah, put her right on the table.
Oh.
They're on the camera.
Yay.
Oh my, look at this.
Those feet.
Yes, this is a, this is our new Dalmatian, this is a Fiametta, which is Italian for little flame.
FEMA? Fiametta.
Yeah. Fiametta, yep.
Fiametta.
And we're calling, she kind of goes by Fia by short, it rhymes with her name that a reader had given her. She's eleven weeks old and.
Going to get tangled up in that.
Yep.
Sponsor moment on the mic.
Yeah. And it was one of those things I've gotten her and I was kind of keeping it under wraps to give her a couple of weeks, but word has gotten out. And I figured I'd bring her before you guys to show you, introduce her to you and let you know that she's here and she's going to be out in the public for people to see.
Oh, what a good girl.
Awesome.
Girl.
Getting ready to meet everybody.
And is her badge in process?
It is, we don't have it as of yet, we're starting to make it and kind of figuring what we're going to do there. What was she going to put on the badge off? She is a very social butterfly, which I think part of this is going to be her coming to say hi to everybody.
Congratulations and thank you.
We might let her go before she.
Yeah. The best part is that I'm loving the pink leash, Mike, I just got to say, loving the pink leash.
Well, it goes with her character, she is, she is very fun, so.
Oh, and how's the relationship with Jax?
She hasn't met Jax as of yet.
Yeah. Hi, come here.
She's going to take the shortcut.
Hi, oh my god.
Table. She's going to try to, yeah.
I have to say, when I met her, I sat on the floor, she jumped in my lap, like took a running leap into my lap and started licking my whole face. So she gets my ultimate vote of support, not that she wouldn't, she's a dog.
Oh.
Oh.
Don't look down on camera. Pause, pause Dee, pause, quick. Oh.
Al, that's all right, we just did that at home, we had one who did that at home.
Yeah, it's okay. We do, under appointments, have her listed as being appointed this evening as the official firehouse.
Okay, well, should we do it now with Chief here?
We can do that.
All right.
Motion to approve the.
Fia. Fiametta.
Fiametta. Officer Fiametta? Is that the appropriate?
Firefighter.
Yeah. Firefighter Fiametta.
Yep, second.
All those in favor?
Definitely.
Oh, how can you not?
Yeah.
Chief, thank you again.
Thank you guys, I appreciate that.
Has she been in the truck yet and?
She's, she's been in my car, she's been around the trucks, we're trying to acclimate her to the noise, which she doesn't seem, when the trucks are running out, kind of when the, when the firefighters are doing the truck checks and they're running the pumps and stuff like that, she's a little nervous around the truck, she'll go around them, but she doesn't approach them. But the loud noises so far haven't bothered her too much and even thunder from lightning storms haven't affected her.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we're just slowly getting her acclimated and, yeah.
And she'll, she'll have her own Facebook page so we can watch her grow?
Probably.
Okay.
I'm, I am going to start bringing her to some businesses and stuff, they kind of reached out, they wanted to meet her, so that's why I wanted to come to you guys first before we start doing that and posting that on Facebook and stuff, because we'll start doing that and showing her off and showcasing her.
That's so awesome.
Yeah, so thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you, five.
Thank you for bringing her in.
Thank you, Fiametta, welcome to Berlin.
So far, she's loving it.
Good.
All right. Let me bring her outside so she can vent for business.
Oh my god. I don't know Kathy, I don't know how you're going to follow that, you know, just saying. No, you can't leave now, you cannot leave now. All right, next up on the agenda is our General Department Update from our treasure collector, come on down. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, we have hired a new treasure collector, I assistant treasure collector.
Say, where are you going?
Yeah. Sergio, he has ten years of banking experience, he worked his way up the line. He ended up as a loan officer there, he has great communication skills with the customers and he is a quick learner, so he's doing fabulous.
Great.
Yeah, helped out a lot so far.
And how have you settled in?
We're settling in, we're getting there, day at a time. But we're progressing forward, so it's good.
Good.
Yeah, we're seeing some things putting into place, so we're moving forward, it's, hopefully will be easier in the next couple of months.
Until the tax bill's gone.
Till the tax bill comes out again.
Then you're going to have to have a lot of chocolate at that front desk, just saying.
Clinton Savings Bank, the funds have been transferred back to Clinton Savings Bank.
Oh.
So we are all good there, all five accounts have been transferred and we are moving forward with those.
Excellent.
So payroll, we have been discussing biweekly payroll. There is a twenty-two hundred dollar savings per year and then also your time per week, so it's something to think about and consider as we move forward. Eastern Bank, that is going to be our, we're going to move our payroll and vendor account from Eastern Bank, from Clinton Savings Bank to Eastern Bank. They have payroll forward, payroll. Positive pay, so that allows them to do a reconciliation for us, it makes that part of it easier. But also it has a protection where if someone's trying to process a check, they will pick that up and give us a call, so it's good fraud protection. So that is what we're working on with Eastern Bank and we hope to be moving forward by August first. B D R, we are, there, we're working with them with the Eastern Bank too to pull the files forward, but also we have learned some new tricks that are going to make life easier for June and I, for the turnovers, we're hoping. We're, we're starting to do that and we'll see how that goes, but that will make reconciliation a little bit easier. And, yeah, I think that's about, that's, what else do I have?
FY twenty-three recon is.
The recon, the recon is getting there.
Yeah.
I've had a chance since Sergio's been in the office to get the information into a cash book. And then we're matching it up to see if it cashed through the bank, so it's going to be a little bit longer, but we will get there. And let's see. Oh, we changed the onboarding process, we have new hire packets now, it's all going through our office. So they come to us and Dee takes care of the quarries for us and that seems to be working out really great because nobody's confused as to where to go anymore.
Good.
So. And we had an enrollment day for the benefits. So that was great, a lot of people signed up for some new benefits they were offering. And then, let's see, what is our last thing here? We will be attending the Mass Treasure Collectors Association in August, both Sergio and I, and that will eventually will work towards getting our certification.
Nice.
So, yeah.
It sounds like you've settled in quite nicely.
Yes, we are doing well.
Finding your way through?
Yes.
What days is Sergio in?
He's every day, he's full time, yep. So.
Good.
Yeah, which is needed. So.
Right. Scott, how's your litany of questions that you had lined up for?
They're still getting there.
You're still getting there, all right, we're still, all right. Look at her, she's like, oh my god.
I was thinking, this is my, for you, but that, I don't, didn't think that biweekly payroll was a feasibility, I thought it was an implementation thing, that like, this was decided like, two years ago that we were trying to get to biweekly payroll. And so it is, and, and so I just, there seems to always be barriers to getting it done, but, but do we have timelines, are we going to actually get there somewhere? Because not only the dollar savings, it is just the, the time savings to get there.
Right, so, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, no, you go ahead, you, you had said, you wanted, both June and you and I had discussed a timeframe so that would give everybody time to adjust.
Right, so because of a large amount of staff turnover, unfortunately, that's a project that hasn't gotten implemented yet. We have been discussing it, it's one of the first things that Kathy, June and I sat down and discussed when we had our first finance meeting. Going to biweekly pay, there is a challenge and concern on the public safety side, we did get it into the last police contract that we could run with it effective June thirtieth of this year, so we are able to move forward. But we talked about giving folks at least six months' notice before we move forward, because there is a paycheck overlap in a period for the first month where you have to make sure we're, you know, folks that are living paycheck to paycheck, which unfortunately are more people nowadays than not, may have a rent issue or a mortgage payment issue with that first check transfer. So we were actually talking about trying to implement right around the beginning of the year.
I think it'd be better to set a date to then sort of work backwards, because July first was the date that we announced a year ahead of time that it was going to happen. I mean, it should not be a surprise to anybody that we are trying to get this done, this sort of.
Well, police are tired, maybe.
Well, and, and they had concerns about the accuracy of things and, and I think we challenged them, like, bring us forward with those mistakes out, we should fix those mistakes, whether it's a weekly or biweekly paycheck, there should not be mistakes in payroll, and I thought that we had done several systems in place that made almost all of those things go away.
So we have still had some issues, so we've implemented the D T S system and that is close to being rolled out. We've been working with accounting and the fire and the police department to incorporate that into the payroll system. We actually have a meeting this week to sit down and go over everything and see if we can get that lined up. So that was a critical piece of moving all of this forward too, so that process has taken a little longer than anticipated. The formulas that have to be entered on the police side were, I think, more complicated than unfortunately were anticipated from the police department. And Sergeant Andre has been diligently working with accounting and with the, well, mostly with accounting, but also with Kathy a little bit too, on making sure, I just didn't want to roll that out and have it cause more mistakes, I wanted to make sure we got the formulas correct in the system. And there's also a user accuracy component of it too, because if the, we're making sure the officers are entering things properly as well so that it doesn't cause problems there too, so there's a little bit of a learning curve with the D T S.
Just that, my frustration actually doesn't much do with either one of the two, is that like, biweekly payrolls and accruals on paychecks and accident payroll were things that were happening when I was first elected four and a half years ago. And, and so the idea that we're still sort of about where we were four and a half years ago feels frustrating, because I don't want it to be another four and a half, five, seven years before we get to things that were designated as priority things again.
Okay.
Even before I got here.
Why don't we, we'll work on getting deadlines in place and I'll bring it back to the board.
And, and it might be easy with a six month notice to figure out the right payroll, because there are holidays at the end of the year as well, and then say, look, you know, we think we can do this in, in, if you were forced, you probably could do it in a couple of months, but I get the needing notices and so, you know, pick a day in January that it's going to go live and then work your deadlines back to that to make that happen.
Yeah, we're also working with Harper's for accruals, that's a process as well.
Right.
Everybody has a different accrual, so they're trying to get that.
I was, some on my brain, I thought that that was solved like early on the last treasure collector, was what the first thing they completed.
They never completed it and Harper's gave up on them. Yep.
And, and we've had a lot of turnover too, which maybe that's why. I knew that you wanted it, but maybe Kristen didn't, because it was, you talked with Margaret or something. So there's been a lot of turnover too.
Yeah, no, it's definitely something that we've kept on our radar, it's on my goals list.
Yeah.
So I certainly want to move it forward and I think you're right, I think implementing those deadlines will be helpful and letting everybody know and getting that information out there. So we will meet, we will get those in place and I will bring it back to the board.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So the envelope that I, I'm just remembering now, the envelope that I gave you was actually a paycheck. Oh. So would that be your office then, rather than the assessors?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. We will make that change.
Yeah.
Do you need it on your estate as well?
I don't know, I, I have, because I, they just started like, the police, the post office is being really ridiculous about, you know, needing post office boxes on every piece of mail. And so I had to bring in an envelope.
Would, would you like to share, we had a few issues with the post office?
Share with me, but I mean, it's getting a little ridiculous.
They're getting very draconian, the U S Postal System or the U S Postal Service, rather, with their regulations that they're handing down to the postmasters. So I'm not accusing the postmaster by any means, but unfortunately, they're getting a lot stricter with how they want things done, so it is becoming challenging.
Yes, I was, I was, I was telling her that I had a package that was supposed to be delivered to my house and unbeknownst to me, it was United States Post Office that was going to deliver it and it ended up going all the way back to California where it started, because I had my, you know, billing address was on the billing and the shipping address was not a post office box, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Anyway.
All right, well, discussion for another day.
So anyway, yeah, I just wanted, because I remind, you know, reminded myself, I wanted to let you know that's what it was.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for our awesome treasure collector?
All good, thank you.
No, see, it wasn't too bad, was it?
Very nice.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank Kathy, she's been putting in a lot of time.
Next time.
I just want to thank Kathy, you know, she's an acknowledging for all the, the time she's been putting in and she is very resourceful, able to, you know, identify ways to do things differently, find, you know, different ways of looking up information, if it's something that she hasn't encountered before and really putting in systems and processes that we're going to be able to keep and implement that makes sense moving forward. And she's teaching Sergio all of those processes, so that way it's all duplicated across the, the office and, you know, I, I think we have a great financial team now. I'm, I'm feeling very confident about our team moving forward, so thank you to everybody, June included.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Have a lovely evening. All right, next up on the agenda is the appointment of Tracy Leary to the Cultural Council.
Okay, it's a one-year term, please, and then we're going to try to get it on three-year terms after that, because they're supposed to be staggered three-year terms per the state. But if we do this as a one-year, it starts to stagger the terms.
Okay, so.
Through June thirtieth of twenty, or.
Does it go by the, the appointment date or the fiscal year? You're going to do the fiscal year.
Okay, sorry, so June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, please.
I'm just going to say, so moved.
I say seconded.
All right, motion is second, lots of discussion, Tracy, thank you very much for your time, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, next up on our agenda, we're going to have a discussion with our FinCom regarding, just going to in general, talk about underwrite, what it is, what it does, what we may, what we may not need to do, but just start the discussion now, so.
Do you want them all promoted to panelists?
Yeah, because they need to open their meeting, right?
They already opened, they're just continuing.
They're just continuing their meeting.
I believe so.
Because they started meeting a half hour before us.
Unless they close that meeting, which we.
Also just bring them all up. Bring them all up so there can just be some discussions. I have, and I see some new people on the. So it'd be nice to get an introduction from other Scott. Scott one, Scott two.
Yes.
Scott Schultz.
I just assume during budget conversation, anytime someone said Scott, they were talking to him.
I'll say, oh, it depends, all right, so.
Do we have Mary yet?
Mary to accept her.
Oh, I see Scott. I mean, they may want to come up, they may not want to come up, that's fine, I see Julie, Heidi, okay.
Mary, Mary should be up, I mean, the good news is, I mean, we had Cliff and Mary were reappointed and our fifth position has been also appointed with Heidi Petard as our new member.
Excellent, welcome aboard Heidi, and thank you Mary and Cliff for coming on back.
Cliff is not here tonight, he is out ill, so just the four of us.
All right, tell him I said hi, all right, so, I don't know who wants to kick it off, Scott, our Scott. I know that you had mentioned underwrite a few times in various meetings with the school committee, so didn't know if you wanted to give for those here, those there, those watching on playback, what it, an overview of what an underwrite is, what it does, or Kristen.
As you said, I, I'm almost fine deferring to Scott Schultz, who at this point has done more research and knows it in more detail than, than I know it, so.
Ready?
Take it away.
Mr. Schultz.
About what an underwrite is and, and what your conversations were about.
Okay, so just the basics of the underwrite, just, it all falls under the two and a half proposition legislation and just the most common thing you hear, people in increasing the levy limit by a number greater than the two and a half percent that will automatically go up every single year. This is a way that you can actually reduce the levy limit by a certain dollar amount. And that vote, if it's passed, will actually, again, it's a permanent reduction in that levy limit. So whatever the new limit it gets set to, if it was passed, then in future years, that levy limit will be used as the default number for what the automatic two and a half percent increase is to that levy limit. So we, we, it's something you rarely hear about, but we did some research and, you know, Kristen found information of this. There has been a few over, underwrites that have been done by towns. It's a very small number, unfortunately, I don't have it up on my screen at the moment, I think it was less than thirty towns that have done this. It seems like those that have actually done it have been successful for the most part. And so it's, it is something that is, you say, it's not totally unheard of to do this. I, I did a little bit of research myself and unfortunately, I see the emails didn't go out when I sent them out this afternoon, I saw there still is my drafts, so they were only sent by me about in a little bit before the finance committee meeting, or maybe it was during, just after our meeting and while we're waiting for this, so I forget exactly. There was some information, articles from Hopkinton, Hopkinton is one of the more recent towns that has done this. There was some information, articles from Hopkinton. Uh, Hopkinton is one of the more recent towns that has done this. They've actually done it three times. And they have done some research on it and there was some ar- articles from the uh uh local newspaper for them and also information that they had posted. So I did send that out. In fact, all the committee members, including all the select board members, uh, Kristen, June, you should have that email. I apologize for that somehow going out earlier today. My, assuming my internet must have been out. It's been up and down a few times today, so I think it was uh when I sent that out earlier. So that's a a little bit of a general piece of information I have. I will turn it over to others that have done some research uh on this. Like I know Kristen has done some, so I don't know if anybody on our committee has has done any more research on any comments.
So it, Scott, just, um, just a couple. We, we looked, uh, we talked about this at our June twenty-sixth meeting and um June and Kristen were kind enough to point us at some websites, you know, that I guess it's D O R. And so that I counted twenty-four underrides since proposition two and a half has been in place in Massachusetts versus like nine pages of overrides. It's, there's no contest about the frequency. But of the twenty-four underwrite votes, all but two were successful. And I found it interesting, the Hopkinton situation is interesting because in in exploring this underwrite question, I saw that Hopkinton has the top-rated school district in the coun- in the, in the state uh, performance-wise, and they've had more underwrite votes than anywhere else. They've had three. Successful, all successful and significant dollar amounts. Um, and reading what you just, I did, while the select board was taking care of other business, Scott, I did read the attachments to the email you sent out. So um, and in those attachments, there was some mentioning of the, of the school um uh, school spend. In other words, that the proponents in Hopkinton for the underwrite wanted to, wanted to contain the impact on taxpayers of, of just of the sense that you can just use the excess levy capacity and and um uh not worry about it. Uh, um, I thought that the the Hopkinton information was very thoughtful because they listed the pros and the cons, and there are clearly both. This is not a straightforward question.
Well, and that was one of the questions that I would have is why, what are the disadvantages to doing this? Open for anyone to add, answer. So.
Well, we could probably read even from like what Hopkinton listed. I don't know, uh, is it possible to put this up on the screen, Kristen? Do you have that? Yeah, that email?
Oh, we don't have a cord.
I am not over here on.
Can I, can I share a screen? Cause I have it on my PC.
Should be able to.
Okay, so. Oh, let's see, share. Look at that little green thing. Let's see what happens. Um. Share. Screen.
Don't you just love technology? She goes away.
Well.
Something.
Did I do it? I'm screen sharing. Look at me. This is so exciting. Okay. All right, all right. Can people see what I'm sharing?
I can.
Yeah, okay. So do you want to start with the cons uh peg?
Um, no, you know what? Let's start positive. Let's go why, why we do it.
All right. Um, I don't need to read this, do I? Can you read it?
Well, not everybody has it.
No, but.
It's in your email. I know.
But but if we summarize for people who are both watching and otherwise.
Ah, okay.
Uh, I don't, Mary, you can go ahead and tell me as easy as I can, but.
Okay, um. It signals a commitment to control spending at current levels rather than baselining spending on a levy limit that has accumulated over a long period. It necessitates specific override discussions for sub- substantial future spending increase proposals. And it, and that gives more focus than the normal budget process provides. Um, sorry, Kristen, it drives town managers to focus on cost control. We don't need that. I'm gonna sort of make an editorial comment, but there it is. It's considered a pro, um, a positive. It may signal fiscal conservatism to lenders, which could enhance the perception of creditworthiness. Note in the current bond market across bond term lengths, the difference in interest costs between the highest bond rating, which Hopkinton has, and the next highest rating is twenty basis points or two tenths of one percent. That's real money, I guess, huh? For a ten-year borrowing, the highest bond rating produces about a seven point one percent discount in interest cost over the next highest bond rating. If exigent cir- uh, conditions arise, an underwrite can be reversed with an override by the same voting bodies with the same approval requirement after conscious public consideration of specific circumstances. So there's your positive reasons, the positive potential outcome from an underwrite. Should I stop?
I mean, yeah, I I can say that one of the positive outcomes is, is that uh really, if you, you have this levy limit, you could increase the town budget just through, you know, select board, FinCom and town meeting in a, in a way that really is detrimental, I think, to a lot of people in town. Um, uh, with, without some underwrites. I mean, you do this to control that ha- from, from happening. You know, uh, I, if I, if I would get to the cons, the, the cons are actually almost the same things as the pros, just the other side of that exact same coin. Is that, that by, by uh, uh, and so if you actually want to go into that very, we'll hit it and we'll explain why they're the two sides of the same coin.
You want me to read through these, Scott?
Well, I just, the summaries are are sort of the same. And I I could, sort of, it's just that, you know, that the cons are that it does restrict you. You know, that if you have an underwrite, uh, and then you need the money, it might not be there unless you do an override. I can definitely agree with the the third point, you know, that says, you know, if a town is doing an underwrite in year one and an override in year two, and an underwrite in year five and an override in year seven, one that is just, I I think that would be crazy. But it would definitely send a like, the town doesn't know what they're doing signal to to bond folks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, when you're more restricted, if something big came up, you're, you're not as flexible, you know, that, that, because you need an override to do things. If somehow we needed to spend a million dollars of taxpayer money, uh, it would have to take, it would be a longer, more cumbersome process to get it if it came up. And because of that, sometimes it hurts your credit rating, which is kind of weird because doing it helps your credit rating and can hurt your credit rating based on what's what you're looking at, you know? The town is showing this conservatism which the bond market likes, but it also restricts your flexibility, which the bond market doesn't always like. And so I wouldn't necessarily say the con is, the the pro is always there. Cause if you restrict it too much, if we restricted our levy limit down to exactly what we spent this year, that definitely would hamstring us a lot. Um, and so I think the benefits come if you're, if you're judicial and maybe Hopking is doing it in figuring out what that number would be. Now, it'd be silly for us to do an underwrite of five dollars, you know, to go through all the pressure, just allow a total five dollars off. It would also be silly, I think, for us to, again, lower it down to exactly what we spent this year and hamstring us going forward. And somewhere between those numbers uh is something that might be beneficial to the town.
So the, how many people do you think in town meeting will understand all that we've just talked about? Because it's gonna, you, you notice in those twenty-four, the list of twenty-four override, underwrite, list, well, the underwrite list. Only two failed because it sounds like to people like, you know, they might be getting money back or.
Well, it is reducing as much money we could take from them without going back for voting.
But, but, but the other reasons why you would want to um, you know, have money on hand. That they, you know, they're not, they don't understand at all.
Well, but it's not money on hand. It's money we could take from them.
Yes, okay, I understand.
Right.
I see what you're getting at, though. It is exponentially more difficult to get an override.
Absolutely.
To get an underwrite.
Well, because our underwrite is we'll control how fast we can raise taxes. I mean, that's a pretty.
Yeah, that's a benefit to the residents, right? And they don't see an override as a benefit to the resident.
Unless they understand the expenses, right, yeah.
Not very many people do.
Yep.
You know, the, your average voter, I think, uh, I mean, I don't mean to be derogatory, but you know, they're, they're not going to understand.
I think if we were in a town that did regular ra- uh, underrides and overrides, it would definitely be a yo-yo effect. It would drive all of us crazy.
Yes.
Um, uh, and as someone who's still a big proponent of an underwrite, I think there is a number that could constrain us a little bit uh, or constrain us some without it, without, because I wouldn't want us to think that in two or three years we needed override quickly. Um, but in in theory, we could have this year raised taxes by ten to fifteen percent and not legally needed a, a, a vote. And the idea that we as a body and a hundred and fifty people who go to town meeting could raise taxes across the town fifteen percent, I I find appalling. Um, and so I'd love to figure out a number that does some constraints on it. I I think I would listen. I I think, you know, Kristen, you and June, you know, what is a number that you don't think our bankers would freak out over, but would give us some flexibility, but also just prevents us from doing these giant tax increases that wouldn't require a vote of the taxpayers?
I, I don't think we're experts enough to do this right now.
Well, I'm not talking about coming up with a number today.
No, I'm talking about putting it on a warrant.
No, and and I don't think that that was the.
Ever, like, ever, Chris, you don't want everyone on a warrant?
No, I didn't say that. I said right now.
I didn't think there was a vote right now to.
There isn't. There isn't. This is the discussion. That's all there is.
Um, Chris, to your, to your point, I did a little thumbnail, but the success rate on the overrides, if I'm remembering, was maybe around sixty percent. And then on the underwrite, of course, it was over ninety percent. So there is, i- it's limited data. I don't know how much weight I'd put on those numbers, but but at least the underwrite is limited data. But I, you're, you're right. I think, I think people's instincts are, are um, it's e- e- easier to get people to agree to an underwrite just because it feels like you're gonna spend less of their money. And in fact, it's probably true. One, one of the things that I noticed, Scott, to your question of Scott Hawkins, that is, one of the things I noticed in looking through these Hopkinton materials is they were considering excess levy capacity of a million and eighty thousand, something like that. Or was it, yeah, a million and eighty thousand. And I looked at our excess levy capacity um, where we sit as of this year's budget. Where is it?
About one point six.
Six.
Yeah, it's one point six million. And so we're much smaller. We have a much smaller, smaller budget than Hopkinton does. And, and, and Scott Hawkins, to your point that we could, we could go up as like, what did you say, ten percent based on, on the excess levy capacity that we have without taking this to an override? And it, it may be that somewhere between one point six million and zero, there's a good number for Berlin, but I don't know what it is. And, and I really just wanted to, to get this into conversation. Um, and then I think it was, um, Eloise mentioned that you need to, if you're gonna do something like this, you have to have a decision by August one. So this is why we're talking about it this evening.
If you want it on the November.
Right, which I think we'd be way too soon. I don't think.
Oh, God, yeah.
I don't think, because we'd have one more select board meeting. I don't think we have enough time even to start digging that for, for November. So I don't think this is a November ballot.
All right. Neither do I, because you would have to come up with information to share with the public as well. So they, you just don't spring it on and be like, hey, guess what?
We'd be guessing in a number and then it would take some time. And frankly, I would like this to be a town discussion. I think there'll be other things on the November ballot that people will be paying attention to and, and, and voting on and other stuff. And so I would prefer this somewhat to be on a, on a town ballot because I think that it's a an, an election where, where people are doing it and whether it's, you know, uh, May of twenty-five or twenty-six, then we'll be on just where, where we can get those sort of informations. Um, uh, I, I think if we start looking at timing, you know, I think we have to look at like, when do we get our free cash certified? So we know what the, what the state thinks our excess levy capacity is. Um, I think it's some conversation with some of our fiscal advisors, both staff and our outside sort of folks who use it, about what number, you know, should, what, what looks good to have for excess capacity that still makes us not hurt our bond rating? Cause I'd hate to do this to improve our bond rating and then have hurting our bond rating if we did it too tightly. I, I think that would be a giant mistake. Even as a town that doesn't borrow much.
Right. Cause that's like available credit, right? They always tell you, don't close a credit card, even if you're not using it, because then you're reducing your capacity.
Correct.
Do you have information to share? Cause I know I do. I would like you to share it, please.
Sure. I, I, I will.
Should I take this off? Should I um stop sharing?
Yeah, I think that's been up long enough for people who are at home and watching it, uh, to be able to read both sides of those. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Uh, I'll, I'll share what I said at FinCom and maybe a little more succinctly, um, hopefully. Um, I have to say, when I first started almost two years ago now and I heard the concept of underwrite, I was just like, what? No, no, no. Well, I had to say, I have never seen a budget situation such as we have had in the past two years. So I certainly understand why it's a consideration and why the discussion is on the table. Um, my biggest concern, though, is if we only reduce it partially, unless you're getting rid of nearly all of it, I don't see much of a benefit because that can still be taken and the taxes can still be raised. So even if you get rid of a third of it or half of it, so say you take five hundred thousand or you take a million, you've still got six hundred thousand dollars. I mean, if you're talking about, we went up to four percent this year and that was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, a little, little bit, right around two twenty-five. So theoretically, you're still going up closer to the eight, nine, ten percent with that left. So I agree. I think there should be some more discussions with the financial advisors. I have to tell you, the Hopkinton information you found is great, Scott. I, I did not come across that. But there really isn't a ton of information out there in terms that I've been able to find in terms of how it affects your bond rating. Um, you know, the other concern I have is we have a major, major issue with our buildings and facilities. And, you know, to Mary's point about, and thank you for saying that we don't have to worry necessarily about the town administrators we've had on cost control because I don't think we've tapped, neither myself nor Margaret tapped into that excess levy. Um, however, if you're looking at short-term, small, you know, if you take a quarter of a percent or a half of a percent to build a preventative maintenance budget that keeps you from having to do a debt exclusion down the line or an override at some point down the line to deal with a lot, not an override, I'm sorry, debt exclusion to deal with a replacement building project because we haven't been maintaining our buildings properly. I see this as an opportunity to perhaps look at using a small amount of it gradually over time. And I think it needs to be fairly balanced between the town and the schools. I think that, you know, there needs to be continued discussions and some type of agreement and understanding that's come to that says, hey, we haven't tapped into this at all. And we have tried to send that message and it just seems to fall a bit on deaf ears. But that there are needs in the town that we have. And my biggest fear is that towns are just not good in general and cities about maintaining their facilities. They're almost like throwaway facilities. You spend millions of dollars building things. You don't maintain them. And then when they fall apart, you build something new. And I would rather put a little bit of money toward that over time with that capacity that we have and, you know, look toward the future, then get rid of it. So I, just a couple of thoughts I have.
Yeah, I mean, I saw this, this discussion tonight just as that, that it just kicks off a discussion as to options they're going to have because budget season is, well, not that far away, you know, so we've got to get things on the table for school committee to understand and for our voters to understand. So if they start hearing some of this, they start seeing some of it, you know, they're going to be more informed. For, so that was my only point, was to put this on the agenda was, it's never too early for a discussion, so let's get it out there.
Right. And for me, this has really almost nothing to do with school. I've been promoting, promoting an underwrite before we had any problems, you know, with budgets related to the schools. When I was on FinCom, I talked about underrides. Uh, I worry when we have the ability without going to voters to raise the taxes by one point six million uh, without, and, and I think we're all great people here and I think we're all relatively, but that doesn't mean the next set of select board or the next uh, uh, town administrator, the next town administrator is in that same position. And I don't think at any point in time, we've, I, I don't know an emergency that would require a million extra dollars a year that I wouldn't want to go to the taxpayers to vote on.
You know. Not a billion dollars each year, but.
Billion dollars each year.
But, but, but I'm saying no. I agree with you.
Right.
Because there isn't, but.
Because that number goes up, because that, the amount we could take, it's a compounding interest sort of thing. Because we have one point six extra, you know, our, our total can go up by one, by two point five percent. So even when we raise our taxes by four percent, our levy limit might still go up because the number that two and a half percent is based on is so much higher than what we're taking from the taxpayers, that, that our limit limit is increasing even though we're increasing rates by four percent. So we could probably increase rates, rates in this town, six, eight, nine percent for many years before we would hit that limit. And I think that would drive way to. And I think that would drive way too many people out of town.
Agreed.
Now, again, and I'm not advocating that we cut it down to the amount we taxed this year because I believe that we need to have that sort of stuff. Uh, uh, some of that flexibility, but we can leave six hundred thousand dollars in flexibility, you know, which is still a significant increase and still a fairly substantial dollar. If, if that's the number, I, I'm making up numbers now. I'm not really sat down. Cause frankly, we've not had this conversation for me to have to figure out where I would stand and what the number should be.
Right.
Um.
I, I think it merits some more discussion and research and thought. I, I do. And I'm shocking myself saying that, but I do.
I'm shocking, you know, I, I actually wrote down a few things, if you don't mind. I would like to, just some notes. Um, there, there are things we could use the excess levy capacity for. I know, uh, Kristen mentioned the facility study. And, you know, we, we are, uh, uh, ever since I've moved here, I've noticed that we've been pretty neglectful, not taking care of things. You know, things that we have purchased, whether it be a building or, you know, vehicles or whatever. I mean, we need to take care of our things. Um, uh, so let's see. And because of the loss of the stores at the Solomon Pond Mall, um, you know, we, we, uh, may need our levy capacity to even rezone the Solomon Pond Mall for another use that I have no idea. I mean, it could cost, um, um, an enormous amount. Um, like I said, it is very difficult to explain this to the public so that they can see both sides, the pros and cons of an underwrite. Um, the, the one thing that, um, well, I'll say this first, being, being fearful that the schools will take the excess levy capacity as they have in the last two years, some of it, um, is not a good enough reason for me to do an underwrite. And, um, the other thing that I wanted to bring up is that my understanding is that, um, we, we, we only need to match Boilston's assessment and they are supposedly at their levy capacity. So they're in, they're in is that we only have to do our supposed at one-third to their two-thirds. And why would we do this? You know, saying that because of the issue with the schools, this underwrite issue has come up again. So, uh, you know, in, in my opinion, I think not a good idea, not a good enough idea. Um, and, you know, I think we as a group, of, of, a whole group, being the select board and the Fed Finance Committee have managed to, uh, be, you know, um, what is the word? Uh, uh, we've been able to be reasonable with the budget, uh, even though it's been difficult the last two years.
Fiscally responsible.
Yes. And I think we are fiscally responsible.
We try.
And you have saved all of that money every year because we've been so fiscally responsible that I, you know, and there are things that maybe we need to look at, which are on the agenda, I believe, after this. Um, that we need to discuss how we're going to take care of some of these things that aren't the school or aren't education, because I think we are doing our share for education just as we have for the last twenty years. But, um, you know, we've got things that we haven't taken care of, so we need to take a look at those.
A couple of things I wanted to point out that, uh, just, uh, the first one is, you know, the, what Kristen had sent out earlier, you know, I mentioned like Phillipston. Uh, so I haven't gone through and been able to research all of these towns. But for example, one of the underrides was done after doing an override. I mean, they were part of a regional school committee and Phillipston's, I mean, it's actually a note at the bottom of that document that Kristen sent out. How, you know, Phillipston, basically they, they needed an override. They approved theirs. Their, uh, partner in the regional schools did not. And because they did not, um, they then, I guess a couple of years later decided to do the underwrite to underdo the override that was no longer needed. So one of the questions will be, you know, obviously is are several of these things, why they're successful? Are they under the same circumstances? Were, are people just undoing a successful override in a regional school system situation? And that, no, did not go through because of others, uh, schools in that situation. So that was one thing I want to point out. The other one too, was just the process of this. I didn't know exactly what it was. The other email I sent out, which was the article on Hopkinton, uh, the answer to like question for me is that the process is a, you know, a majority vote by the select board. It then must go on as award item to town meeting. It must then be approved at town meeting. And then if it's approved there, and then it goes to a ballot. So that was one of the big questions I had before was what would the process? Cause I know as soon as something was mentioned saying in order to put something on for the November ballot, you know, you'd have to vote on something by August first, but I'm going, well, clearly we also would have to have a town meeting before that timeframe. And I know we're only looking at a special town meeting in a December timeframe. But that's where that question really popped into my head. And then when I saw the, said the article, uh, articulates that very clearly of the process that Hopkinton had to go through. So those are my two points I wanted to make or additional information to add to the discussion.
No, and I appreciate that. Again, the only reason that I put it on here was for us to start looking outside the box and trying to come up with alternative ways that when budget season comes around that, um, regardless of the issue, that we have alternate ways to look at how the money is spent or potentially spent in town and what we can do to help our taxpayers. So that's all. There was never any intention to vote, to put it on, uh, any type of ballot. It was just, hey, the word underwrite has, has been kicking around. Let's put it out in public and get it out there to discuss. Start to discuss what it is, what it does, why we should, why we shouldn't. And then obviously the whole big process of what we need to do to educate folks around us.
Right. Cause I, I think we'd have to be clear, an underwrite does not lower your taxes.
Correct.
An underwrite limits how much your taxes might someday in the future go up. But it does not, like, if it's successful, your taxes bill will not go down, unfortunately. It takes lower spending for the tax bill to go down.
Okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. And it's just something that we can keep kicking around, um, you know, as budget season approaches and people have to come forward with a, hey, we need, hey, we'd like, we want to talk to you. These are some options.
I, I was quite disappointed reading the notes that you can't do an underwrite by citizen petition.
That you can, you mean?
Cannot.
Oh, you can?
I can. Oh, I thought that was one of the comments.
No, I, I, I think you can. I think the citizens can bring it up, Scott. Yeah.
They can. So it says, unlike, I, I pulled this from the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association. It says, unlike overrides, underwrites can get on a ballot by citizen petition.
And I'm, I'm not sure, Scott, are, are you certain that you have to have both a, a town meeting and a ballot vote? I thought you could do it with.
I was gonna say, I also thought it just, it was a ballot vote.
Yeah, unless it's tied to a budget, like reducing a budget.
Yeah.
I don't think you have to do the town meeting, because town meeting is the appropriation part of it. And if you're just reducing the capacity and you're not allocating it or removing it from a budget, there's no appropriating part of it.
Well, seeing that just drives home the point is that much more detail is needed on this.
I would do more. Again, we're not doing any votes tonight. And so we don't need to resolve those. But those are the type of things to look at.
Definitely.
Right. And, and if you're onto wonky questions, you know, Chris mentioned the mall and the changes at the mall. And, and I know we have, uh, we're looking at, um, less revenue and less real estate market value with commercial properties, I think. I'm not sure how it all weighs out for us, but the wonky question is if your, if your commercial values go down enough that you're, uh, they cause a reduction in the levy ceiling, what happens to your excess levy capacity?
I don't, I don't think it does. I think that's one of the things is that even, cause you can tax, it is a dollar amount sadly.
That's my tax rate.
It's, but your, but your tax, you're, you're what you can tax and go up by two hundred percent. But if your values go down, your tax rates go up, it doesn't change your amount of levy capacity. It just makes the, if you use the excess capacity even worse for those people who are still around.
Correct. That's why tax rates don't matter really when you're trying to, the actual like fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. You can't really use that as a comparison because it's really what proportion of the overall, um, you know, uh, percentage of lev- or amount of levy that you're taking. Um, I'm not saying that right, but yeah, levies are.
Right.
But you can explain it.
Can you imagine town meeting residents trying to understand this?
Well, I, I'm trying to.
A simple sentence.
Well, I mean, all the, all of the things that we've been talking about, not just your sentence.
Well, but all those other things you, you're trying to remove is that the levy limit is the total amount we're allowed to take. And we're going to lower the amount we're allowed to take.
You know, you, you came in as a finance committee member the first year I was on the select board and brought this up again. And Thomas Sanders said to you, no, no, no.
He did. He said no as well. But it also proves that I'm not doing it in any response to the school board action.
No, that's true. That's absolutely true.
Conversation between anything is really true, but it's not. I have been advocating this for almost a decade now at this point. And specifically, had we done it a decade ago, we could have been in a different spot when it came to this town meeting.
It's been okay though. We're doing fine.
I don't know if this last year is an example of fun.
All right. Well, let's, let's.
I think we have more stuff to.
Yes, we, let's move along.
I think it is clear, none of us want to do anything for this fall election. Okay.
No. So, um, Scott and company, I would only ask that if you stumble across any information on and underwrite that between our board and your board, that we just keep an open dialogue going. And at some point, if we have a collection of information that needs to be discussed, then we have a meeting about it. But I just, again, I, I appreciate you all being here and extending your meeting into ours and appreciate your input always and everything that you all do. So with that.
Thank you.
I think we're good.
All right. I just want you, just give me a moment so we can adjourn our meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So motion to adjourn?
Back like that.
Second.
Doing that for a while.
All right. Roll call, Scott, I?
Mary, I.
Julie, I. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Very adjourned. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for the discussion. It's what I hope for. Thank you.
You betcha. Thanks, Mary Porter.
Yep.
All right. So next up is our town administrator report correspondent. So Kristen, over to you.
Okay. I feel like my, um, my job has been broken into two seasons. It's like a rainy season and a dry season. We have a budget season and a project season is sort of how things have been shaping up. Because you can't do much, many projects during budget season. So you're trying to cram them all in in between. Um, which leads us to ARPA. And I know we're going to be talking a little bit about that, so I will make it quick. Um, as a reminder, they all have to be under contract. All funds for projects must be under contract by December thirty-first of this year, which is in accordance with revised recent state regulations, or we have to return them to the state. And I don't know about you, but I don't want to return any money. I'm sure you feel the same way. So, um, I also had hoped we wouldn't have so many ARPA projects, so they would be easier to manage. But unfortunately, there were a lot of, not unfortunately, there were a lot of great ideas out there and we are doing a lot of exciting things. Unfortunately, with nineteen ARPA projects, that's a lot of administration in terms of procurement, contracts, finance and project management. So this is going to be my main focus from now until the start of the FY twenty-six budget season, which believe it or not, is coming up in just a couple of months. Don't, don't cry, June. We're okay. We'll get through it. Um, also in terms of personnel, um, working on, um, requested a meeting with the Personnel Committee to discuss the draft job descriptions for the permanent Council on Aging and Social Services Director and part-time Recreation Director positions. And also have been working with June, went through the new Police Union Memorandum of Agreement in preparation for the start of the new fiscal year, as there were a number of financial changes made to the present agreement. Uh, Public Safety Building Second Floor Construction Project. We put out the RFQ or Request for Qualifications for Designer Services. Responses were due June thirteenth and two firms submitted. Uh, Chief Shartner, Chief McQuillan and myself independently reviewed the document according to the designer selection standards and the criteria that were outlined in the RFP, uh, RFQ for, um, evaluative criteria. And the unanimous recommended firm came out to be Contact Studios LLC. So I will be asking the board this evening to authorize me to enter into a contract with Contact Studios. Um, their amount was fifty-two thousand, five hundred. The RFP said the amount needed to be less than sixty thousand dollars. So that falls under, which is great. And we have already allocated ARPA funding to this that we can use. Um, the next will be to, the next steps will be to bid out the purchase of building materials. And, uh, we're already in contact with ACABET about insurance requirements, indemnification and paying the fifteen percent fee that they require on the project as they want to start sometime this fall. Uh, also I have prepared and sent over a contract to Green Mountain Communications for the radio equipment installation project phase one in the amount of forty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. This is to install the antennas that we have had that unfortunately we had to, um, cancel the last contract. Uh, the, as you recall, the company submitted a change order for a crane that was, that would have put them over the uh, cost of the next lowest bidder, uh, and they were unwilling to rescind that change order. So in accordance with the contract, we did, uh, cancel the contract. Um, I'm also working with the Highway Superintendent on the Complete Streets Grant Project. And we do have a proposal in the amount of a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars for the design services for this project. I would be requesting the board allocate an additional thirty-five hundred in leftover ARPA funding. We did allocate a hundred and fifty thousand for road engineering, but we used forty-five thousand to prepare the grant applic- I'm forty-five hundred, sorry, to prepare the grant application, um, which we got a half a million dollars out of. So I think that was well spent. Um, also what I'm excited to report to, and we can talk a little bit more about this under the facilities study. Uh, Tim Wysocki, the Energy Committee Chair and National Grid have, um, put out, uh, a call for projects for the Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant. And what we'd like to do is apply for a fifty thousand dollar grant and match it with a hundred thousand dollar and hundred thousand dollars in available adder funds from the electricity aggregation that we get a small amount of pennies back every bill and fund a part-time sustainability director. There are a number of things this person could work on, um, particularly at climate, moving us into the climate leader community, which is the next step or the next program after the green communities. Um, and I know we were, Berlin was a leader in that, and it would be great to move into that next phase of the state's, um, green program and reducing the community's overall carbon footprint. Also working with a lot of the land use boards. And the one I'm really excited about is working on implementing the facility study because everything we want to do is energy efficient. So that would be a way for us to actually move forward and implement that project. Um, and, and with an eye to sustainability and how to move forward um, and with cost savings and environmental, uh, considerations in mind. So, uh, many thanks to Tim Wysocki. He put the scope together, um, very appreciative for his assistance there. Um, I am also up for my Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official Certification, which allows me to be the Chief Procurement Officer. Uh, they make you do it every three years. I don't want to say on camera that it's a little bit of a racket, but, um, they make you take a whole bunch of classes and a renewal course with an exam. So I'm in the process of taking the two continuing education classes and I will be doing the exam so I can renew my certification, because many federal and state, um, granting agencies and programs require you to have it. Um, we'll also be talking about the German consulate in Boston, who has contacted us. Um, she is making an effort to visit every town in New England named Berlin or Berlin. I don't know how the other towns pronounce theirs, uh, of which there are four. So she will be coming to Berlin here on Ju- July twenty-fifth. And I know we'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, we still working on negotiations with the dispatchers up at Neshoba Valley Regional Dispatch. Um, talked about, uh, historical commission, working on procurement. They are moving forward actually with a lot of exciting work at the Bullard House. Um, they actually have been working on the well, the septic system. And next is a, putting in a bulkhead and a basement entrance into the building. Um, and I also worked with Lisa Wysocki and the Berlin Affordable Housing Trust regarding implementing a potential down payment assistance program using some of the CPA funding that they were allocated at town meeting. So a lot of exciting things going on.
Here's my thing, sorry, when, when the German, with the person, the German MC shows up, I had friends from Berlin, Germany here yesterday. We were so excited that we took them to one of the signs at the edge of town, so they got a picture taken in front of the welcome to Berlin sign. But they're taking back, uh, they, they left this morning to go back home after being in the States for a couple of weeks. It was, they were kind of fun, excited to be in Berlin.
As she's new and wants to do her visits to everyone.
He and I have been teasing each other for years because he does some DJ stuff. He's like, I'm going to be performing in Berlin. I'm like, yeah. It's like nearby. Can I get, is it eighteen seventy Town Hall? So, no, no, but I live in. Um, I have questions on the, uh, question. Uh, the, I think we should be careful about the timing of the hiring of the part-time rec director.
Okay.
Um, you know, if the part of their job is to organize all the activities going on the new fields that aren't built yet. I don't want to have that position sort of here and running for significantly months. I mean, months, but a long time before the space they're sort of trying to coordinate activities on is even available already.
Hmm.
Um, uh, and so we need some, when we look at, when we look at bringing that on board, uh, a conversation at that point. I don't think we need a conversation now, because there's too many things out, but but I'd like to, I'd like us to think about that.
Okay, good point. And I see them helping to perhaps implement some of that, so we should have that conversation.
I think it's a, I just want to make sure it's tricky that I don't want someone on on staff at the town who has nothing to do for several months. And so we just the argument is great, that when they get here, here's what they're going to do and how they're, because the position was designed to bring in revenue.
Correct.
And so I I want that position to be in a position to be successful, because I don't want to sit here six months where they're coming back to the budget and say, look, they've been here six months, and they brought in ten dollars.
Right.
And and uh, and that would not, I think would be disingenuous when we, when we, when we discuss the position, what it was about.
Sure.
On the um Council on Aging Director, I know that in the Powderhouse News, um, I sent comments in, so I'm wondering, do you have those comments? Do you know what they are?
Not yet. I've been in communication with Bob Blair, that I know they are having another council meeting um to get some more feedback. They've also been researching other local councils on aging to get some feedback there. So I think he's packaging it all together.
Okay.
And then the Sustainability Director would be sort of a temporary position, sort of while it's doing that. It's not one of these things we're adding to the town budget forever.
Well, hopefully not, but a little bit more long term than just like a year per se. Um, because the adder funds do continue to come in, and it would be like a fractional time position, perhaps five hours or maybe ten hours a week, as long as we could sustain it.
Mm-hmm. I don't have any questions, Chris.
Nope.
Thanks back, if she can take back.
I mean, I have some stuff on ARPA, but I will wait. And again, apologies. The, in full, full disclosure, in case people are wondering why my phone is going off, um, the bee people are at my house and uh they are smoking the bees out. So if we are to smell smoke in the yard, to not panic and call nine-one-one, so. Just important information. So again, uh, just keeping it out there so people wonder why I'm looking down at my phone. All right, uh, thank you for that. Well, let's whiz into the facilities discussion, facility study discussion. And again, I did not see this tonight as we need to vote, we need to decide which buildings are on the chopping block, not chopping block, what we're going to fix. I think with the feedback that has been received by most of the departments um in town, unfortunately, I don't think we kind of hit the mark on what we were asking for. Um, for the buildings and future use of the buildings. Because with just a few comments, everyone wants every building standing, which physically, I don't think we can do it. Uh, so just didn't know on this one if we could figure out what we wanted to do for potential next steps. Is next steps, we all go away and come back at the next meeting and say, I want to focus on these buildings. And we, you know, rock, paper, scissors, decide which one it is, is it, we need to get in front of capital planning? Because I'm assuming that they have a date that we need to get to. Does it kind of sort of maybe roll into be under old business? That if, insert department name here, who has requested X amount of dollars here, is sliding their feet, and they're not doing anything that we say, so sad, too bad, you had all this time, and guess what? I'm now taking your money and we're using it on something. I don't know. Uh, so that was just the whole point of what do you feel, Chris and Scott feel, should be next steps for the facilities study discussion?
I would really like to hear the recommendation of our town administrator.
On the nature of the conversation?
Um, I think oh, an overall, as far as um the write-up that was done for the facility study. And I mean, I haven't heard anything. And you know, I have read through most of it. But I haven't heard, what, what is the recommendation? Do we follow what these people are saying? Do we not? Which area would you think we should focus on? I mean, you're, you're here the day to day.
Yep.
And so I would like to hear what you have to say.
Sure. Scott, do you want to go first before?
I I was just only suggesting that uh uh it, that we almost pick several, not, not tonight. But we start picking on each agenda item. We pick two or three buildings, or four or five. We would pick a subbuilding to longer schedule, some are short. And we talk about both what has been written out and people have suggested, what we've heard in the street. And we come up with a suggested direction for particular buildings, including on some the potential of using ARPA funds for what the, that immediate repairs are on a building that we think has value to town and should be kept. Um, or and where we think those recommendations in that study make sense. Um, I I think between the study and some of the people who've given comments, and I agree, it's not as much as I'd like, but it's something to go on. You know, I have my opinions on buildings I've been in. I have less opinions on buildings I've not spent some time in. Uh, and I definitely heard from people who told me their opinions on some of the buildings.
So that's the kind of thing I was hoping that Kristen could also.
Right.
Touch on.
Sure. So I think that you have to take a multifaceted approach, because the study was very comprehensive, and it looked at different things, right? So it looked at current conditions, preventative maintenance, actual building, you know, lifespan, if you will. And they did an energy audit, and it did a space needs analysis. So I, and you know, I think some of the lag in this is my fault, because it's just something I haven't been able to focus as much attention on as I've wanted to. So there's a couple of things that I think we need to do. Um, Peg has been helping to work on a list of small items that I think our ma- uh, facilities person might be able to help with. Things that are like painting or little things that can be done around the building that are recommended um in the study. I think we need to look at the space analysis, and if thing, if we can shift folks around a little bit, it might help us figure out. I mean, we have some vacant buildings, so that's not going to affect those buildings. But we need to look at what those recommendations are for some of the other buildings where we might be able to free up some space. But I think the two biggest things that we need to do is we need to implement a preventative maintenance schedule. Um, which I would work on with Ken, who is our um building maintenance operator. And then I need to work on a list for FY twenty-six. And what I see that is being twofold. One is a list of how to fund the preventative maintenance items, which would go in the operating budget. And the other is a capital list of items that we need to actually do to the building. So my suggestion, if it works for the board, would be to start putting that together. Um, capital requests are due November thirtieth. That'll be upon us before we know it. Um, and I do think to Peg's point, that as ARPA money becomes available from projects that are finished and didn't use at all, or people unfortunately that say, I can't do it, I can't get it under contract in time. We start using that to match some of the capital requests that we are um putting forth, or at least puts, we have to get some of it under contract. So we start actually doing, rather, sorry, not to match the cap, but start actually doing some of that work to offset what we would be requesting from capital. So that is kind of the plan that I have in my head.
Um, wh- what I think is missing, and I don't know how we get it, but like, uh, uh, we know what a building could potentially use for, like, I don't know how much space would the food pantry want, if they had control of how much space they have. How much space does historical need to store all their stuff if space was unlimited, or if we, like, where would we need more or less office space, because?
Did you not get it from that so much? Say, say that again.
I thought I could've got more from that, like, what a building might be best used for, but not necessarily like historic, as like, as an entity might want. You know, I know how much is in this, here's a storage building, you know, how much is in the Bullard House, I know how much is in these. I know some buildings might be better for storage and less better for storage. But like, what their needs might be.
So maybe I need to submit their questionnaires that they did. Maybe those somehow didn't get incorporated.
And maybe I missed it. And so feel free to like, point out that Scott, you missed this, because I do, I do scan some things here and there. And so I, 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 I put it on me that if I've missed it, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, and I think that what we need to do at some point, the three of us, is a policy of like, what do we feel? We need to put our stamp on what we feel some of these buildings should do. So then, I don't know if Kristen should be putting together a preventative maintenance plan on a building that if the three of us somehow agreed, we absolutely need to tear down tomorrow, or put up a higher real estate agent tomorrow, that Kristen's not spending her time putting together a better maintenance plan for that building. Um, and, and sadly, or correctly for open meeting laws, we've actually not had a chance, the three of us, to sit down and sort of go building by building and say, yes, we love this building, it is a historical landmark, we need to get it, or it's just in great shape, or it has this great use, that we definitely should keep it, or the reverse. You know, I think the only building we generally have talked about, that we generally agree, we, we want more removed is the Brown Barn on South Common. But on that, you know, we've not really talked about any of these other buildings.
So maybe the next step then, is that's a really valid point, is to put, I did a little bit of like a bulleted summary of each building of like four or five of what I thought the key points were, like, what's the useful life of the building? What's the cost to repair between zero to five, five to ten, ten and up? And maybe if I kind of call out some of that information from the reports, and I match it with the notes from the facilities study group, I could actually bring that to a meeting and, you know, kind of distill it down, so you're not looking at a forty-page document. Um, and then we could, we could have the discussion from there.
Yeah, a- and I think maybe if the, the three of us add a love the building, hate the building, sort of independent, individual, we send it to you. So you could say, look, the three of you all agree, this building is definitely worth putting time and energy into keeping. This building, the three of you all agree that, that you think really we should find another use for that's not owned by the town. And then that focuses the conversation on, there'll be a handful of buildings where we disagree, and that we can have a conversation around that. Um, a- and probably change one or more of our minds on, on uh, on those buildings.
Well, and I think we have a list that the facilities um study discussion group or or study group put together that we could start off of. And we have that in the notes, I think, from one of the meetings, Peg.
Yeah, I mean, they do. The, the Excel sheet that's in there about the evaluate, evaluation feedback summary, um, and again, um, you know, I, I love the line of, you know, how to fund, no comment, nothing, free cash.
That's a gift that's up to us, then.
Well, yeah, um, you know, urgent improvements, no comment, none. And I'm thinking, did you read the report? Because I read the report. And that's not really what I took away from some of it. Um.
Yeah, some of those could have been just, they have no comment on what was in the study. But you're right, it doesn't say whether or not they don't think there's urgent needs, or they think the list of urgent needs is correct, and so they don't need to change it.
And that's why I'm almost, you know, and I, I don't want to send around another question answer to them, because I know that it's summertime and everyone's away. But you know, maybe we just answer the question, what do you see as the viability for this building? And if it's, well, it could be, if we put in eight hundred thousand dollars, to me, that's not an acceptable.
Right.
Answer, you know, to that, because it's going to take twenty-five years to get eight hundred, and by the time you get to eight hundred, it's now one point nine.
Mm-hmm.
Type of thing, so.
But if they had a thousand times for building a three million dollar new building.
Correct.
But, but that's right, there's not a way to have that. And at some point, again, some point, I think we have to make the unpopular decisions at the select board, at a public meeting to say, we don't think this building really is long for life in this town. And I don't know which one it is, and we'll get flack for it every time we drop off our trash, but uh, we'll make a kudos every time we're going to drop off our trash about it, too, so.
Correct.
Well, I can also put some recommendations together based on all of this information we've gleaned, then you can blame me.
It's our job to set the policy.
It is.
Recommendations, and it's our job, job to set the policy. But yeah, your insights are are valuable to it. I, I think if we add our opinions on the buildings, and you, again, where we agree and don't agree, that allows us our conversation here to be faster and more focused.
Well, you might be hearing more from the public than, like, for instance, me on a particular building. Maybe Scott's hearing on certain buildings, Meg might too, but you know.
Yeah, we're getting spotty feedback.
And you know what? And honestly, there's really not that many buildings, you know.
Yeah.
Cutorio Bullard, I lump as one. The South Common Buildings, besides the Brown Barn.
Yep. Yep.
You know, Legion Hall, um, Old Rescue Building, which is Rudolph and the old fire station.
Yep.
Uh, the transfer station, eh, there's really not a lot there, library. Uh, and then old, old Highway Barn, New Highway Barn, I would hope there's not really much that we have to do with New Highway Barn. And then obviously, our building, you know, the municipal buildings and town halls. So when you think about it, there's really not a lot of buildings that I think if, you know, to Scott's point, if you said, you know, yep, it just needs to come down because there's too much work and it's too much money, yep, with X amount of dollars, maybe we could do something with it. Here's the use of how I see the building, or three, we're good. You know, we don't need to do anything, and that could.
Used to that Lincoln Street.
Well, that's, that was, that's the, um, that's the lead.
It goes by several different names, but.
Yes, that's Legion Hall. Because that's what it's formerly known as, is Legion Hall.
West School is what it was.
But it went out as Legion Hall. So, you know, Kristen, maybe that's our next step. Um, you know, not for our next meeting, because you're just coming back from vacation, but maybe for the meeting after in August. Is that the three of us independently just send you a, a note of, take it down, keep it up. I think it's fine.
Okay, that's helpful.
Uh, and if I understand our historic preservation rules, I think, what, it's twenty-five years, fifty years? Either one of those, almost every building in there qualifies. And so uh, it could be when we get ready to talk about some of the buildings, we bring in historical, some of their opinions on which ones they think are worthy, right? Because it's, it is a tough call, because there are, there, there's a nice building, one of those. There, there's a farm next to mine that has a lot of historic stuff that has happened in the town, but the cost to renovate it is half million plus. It just doesn't make it.
You just can let it sit and fall apart. What's the point?
Right.
Yep. All right. So why don't we do that for whatever our next meeting is in August? Our first meeting is in August to independently have sent you um.
Right.
Our input, and you can meld that in.
Perfect. And I'll send out the notes from that January meeting that we had, that had some, that had a good little
Yeah.
Breakdown on each building of the thoughts that the group had, so that'll give you a jumping off point.
Well, and plus two, if the information needs to be into capital by November, um, it doesn't leave us a lot of time to decide to go to capital.
Well, but even if it goes, I mean, again, if we're using ARPA, it has to be under contract.
Correct. Correct. Right. Which leads us right into.
ARPA.
ARPA, um, you know, and on your report, Kristen, you know, nineteen is a lot to me, kind of like to Scott's point with Kathy about we put in a date, even though it said it needs to be under contract by December something, something. Well, if they don't have it by December something, something, that doesn't leave us time to do anything. So to me, we say, you have until insert date here, whatever date is here. If you don't have it, we're taking the money back. Got it?
And I've been sending out emails since January to that effect, like every three months, that said, in July, we're going to be reviewing this, and you may lose your money if you haven't made enough progress.
I think it may be a phone call. I mean, then you can.
Oh, yeah, I've been talking to everybody.
Yeah, just make a phone call on things that aren't up to speed or up to date.
I mean, there, there are nineteen projects, but eight of them are completed, like all done. There's nothing more to do, there's no one to harass, because the project was started, under contract, done, completed, checks paid.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, uh, so that does make the pile ill. And you're right, I'm looking at the list, and some of them, like, I haven't heard for a while, and I have no idea if anything is happening on it. And we should move on some of those quickly. Some are clearly underway, active, we're just waiting for some checks to come in and the final pieces to be done.
Yep.
Um, uh, I uh would, for me, it would be beneficial. I don't know if it says, but i- if there was a column on that spreadsheet that actually said the amount under contract, supposed to expand it in balance. So I get a sense of what's under contract, what's not, because that lets me know what might be at risk at the moment.
Right.
Um, uh, uh, because I think there might be some of these projects we might declare dead sooner rather than later.
Okay.
I don't know if we're allowed to say.
It's kind of hard to ignore a phone call. That's why I was suggesting a phone call. It's very easy to ignore an email.
But to, hmm. Everybody's been responsive, I will tell you. Um, and I have had conversations with everyone on every single one of these projects. The one that I had the most concern about was the playground, because that's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, Julie has a quote for one sixty. She just met with the rec group last week. I haven't had a chance to catch up with her since then. But that is actually now moving, and I have, we sat down last week and I said, listen, it's got to be under contract. So they were kind of waiting to see what happened with the fields and how everything was going to play out, but she understands the urgency of it.
Yeah, and I'm hoping our building discussion, our facility discussion, we end up with the overused term of some shovel-ready projects that like, in November, we could get under contract quickly to do some preventative measures, one of these fell apart at the last minute to say, yes, let's, I, I don't want to pick on any projects, but I mean, let's, let's renovate this building. You know, I think we can get a contract to that relatively quickly. I don't think we're going to do that on six-figure projects, but we, I mean, the whole thing was a million dollars to start over, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand to start off, and then we have, we have spent a chunk of it already. And so, um, uh. uh, I think we're, we're not in super horrible shape.
We've allocated or appropriated all of it. Um, about what we have left over for funding is about twenty-two thousand from things we've appropriated. And we've expended a little over a third, about a third of it. Um, there are three things in green on here that I wanted to specifically highlight, and then I can answer any other questions you have about the projects. Um, the first one is Project Seven, the road engineering. That's the one I mentioned in my TA report that I was asking if we could please add thirty-five hundred dollars from that estimated leftover funding to be able to fund the Howard Stein Hudson Complete Streets contract for the design that's at, um, one forty-nine.
That would be under road engineering?
That's road engineering. Yep.
Okay. Save me thirty-five hundred out of the four, the hundred and forty-five.
Correct. And that will then be under contract and that will secure the one hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred forty-nine thousand.
I would like to make a motion then that we add thirty-five hundred dollars to the road engineering project and we take thirty-five hundred dollars out of the completed facility and reuse study project that had five thousand dollars left in.
All right, lots of discussion anymore? Not hearing any? All those in favor?
All right. Um, digitization of documents is a dead project. Unfortunately, we need to reappropriate the funds. All of the estimates that were received have ongoing annual expenses. We need to look at a different way to do it.
So the digitization of the documents?
That was something that Amy.
But it says complete over in the status.
Oh, because it, I'm sorry, it didn't catch the notes column when I PDF'd it. I said it, the, it says reappropriate funds. I'm sorry. No, no, my apologies. I didn't pick the notes up.
All right.
So that then rolled down into that twenty-two thousand dollars of estimated leftover funding. And one suggestion I had is, um, it was brought to my attention that the poll pads uh, for the election workers to check people in was one of the things that were recommended as part of that electronic voting. It's thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, it had been requested by the town clerk's office, but at the time, they put forth just the um, voting machine itself. Um, I think that's a worthy project that we have a quote for, that we could fund and it would help make our check-in process for our town meeting and elections a lot smoother.
So is there still thirty-five hundred for balance on the, on the voting machine? I thought that it was, that we were right up to ten.
The thirty, we are, the thirty-five hundred is for the, um, that we still have, we still owe them for, we have a, um, an agreement. But we still owe them for when they come out to do the training and, um, the first year of, first year of warranty and software agreement, I believe, is what that's covering. I have it all written down, but.
So you want to move the use thirty-five hundred of the five thousand that's under digitization of documents?
Sure, which I return to the pool, so, or, you know, from the twenty-two.
Okay, so. So moved.
A second.
All right, uh, hearing any more discussion? Not hearing any? Let's vote. Uh, all those in favor? Well, yeah, because it does make a whole lot of sense to spend ten grand on voting machines and then have the poor person sit there at the beginning with a piece of paper. Checking you in. If you're gonna, if you're gonna go forward on the process, do it the right way.
Well, and as I ran into when I was in a panic that we were gonna have to shut downtown meeting, uh, somehow the, the handwritten list of disappeared of, um, non-registered voters. Because I was getting desperate where I was gonna ask town council if we could literally call out names and ask people, they could please move into the other room. Cause I didn't want to have to reschedule and the list had floated off somewhere.
All right. So then that looks like we're around, well, nineteen doing peg math. Nineteen, one.
That's, yeah, that's leftover from projects that are completed. Um, if I could, that's the, the weatherization project?
Yes. Fred has a quote, it's about six thousand dollars. Um, he is waiting for the company to give him a date for install and he has reached back out to them again.
Is it possible we could use some of that money, just pay someone to sit at the vendor's office and stare at the manager until they actually get us the quotes and get us the equipment?
It's been really difficult.
Possible just to hire an outside contractor to come in and do it?
I don't think, I think it's getting the parts, it's been the hard part.
Well, we gave that up. Now we're buying it and we finally got the quote to do it. And so now, and we're having someone do it now. We're not, we're not waiting and playing games anymore with the original installers.
You know, shame on them.
So we are actually gonna do it, but I believe it's gonna be less than ten grand. So just to keep in mind, that's another fifteen.
Another fifteen that floated back up.
I'm just waiting until we get the finalized everything with install and parts.
And if I asked about, so, uh, the website upgrade, we're actually doing it? I thought that was under contract at this point.
No, so we got a couple of quotes and they were all around thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars to do.
Getting emails. I mean, would you like me to look at your website?
It's just called spam.
And it's actually the same company that over and over again.
Honestly.
Dee and I had an interesting conversation today that the Civics Plus, our website is going to a Drupal format that they're requiring us to make the move to, which is actually going to give us a much better format for the website. I think part of it is when we do the migration to Drupal, we need to set it up differently. And I think if we just did that, it might make a huge difference. I think it's just that things are not organized very well or easy to find on the website.
And they're not updated, you know, unfortunately it fell back to each department to do the updating and it was just one of those.
Right. So what we need to find out is how, how much that migration's gonna cost, because I know they're gonna charge us for it, even though they're making us do it. So, um, we should find out how much it's gonna cost and then see how soon we can get that under contract.
Isn't there, isn't there someone that, um, even someone from town that could just be the person in charge of the website?
We had, but.
Yeah, it needs to be.
No, there was another gal that stepped forward, but it fell through.
It, it's not as easy as it sounds, unfortunately.
I know.
Is the, um, I thought the website was part of the ARPA, um, God, ADA grant that was submitted?
It was. However, um, the Drupal format offers far more accessibility in terms of its functionality as well, from what we understand. So it may negate the need for this. So it's something we need to look into a little bit more. But I do have a couple of quotes, at least two, that are in the third, closer to thirty, thirty-five thousand.
All right. And what about the fifteen hundred for rec program funding?
August, they are doing their camps.
No, do you think we'll have enough left from ARPA to go ahead and do something with the website? Why don't we just do that? I mean. It's too bad my daughter isn't closer, because that's the kind of thing she, she does. She does websites for people.
I think we need to get a little bit more information on this, because this Drupal migration just came out recently that they were going to make us do it. So let, maybe we can bring that back at the next meeting with a little bit more info. But I think this should be a standing agenda item going forward, at least for a while.
Like the balance for ARPA.
Yeah, because if we talk about it on the twelfth, then there may or may not be movement, but I would just have it as a running, a running thing. So if something falls down, we can attack or just say, we've asked, you've given us nothing. Therefore, we take, so sad, too bad.
Yep. And the South Commons Parking and Barn Demo, I was waiting to see if we got the fifty thousand, um, for capital, which we did. So now I can move forward with putting that out for which that'll be a big process, but we'll get it done.
All right. Well, we're moving along with that, so that's goodness.
And I gave you the spreadsheet itself too, which down at the bottom has a ridiculous number of worksheets in it, but it has one on each project. So if you want more specific information on what's been spent on each project, it's there.
All right, um. Review of Town Administrator Goals is next up on the agenda.
So, um, if you recall, when, um, we did the FY twenty-four goals, um, I'm using that same spreadsheet that we talked about back in April, end of March, beginning of April. Um, if you look at the first page, there were two goals that were not done or close to being done, but not done. That was the facility study and the Berlin Memorial School lease. The lease is done, the facilities project, or the facility study is done, but we have to implement now. So that's gonna roll over. If you look at the second page, um, the, the good news is the Highway Solar Project is actually done. Um, which is great. Phase two, you signed off on the radios for Motorola. This one, the revised soil importation bylaws, I believe maybe the only, one of the only standhold or holdovers from Margaret when she was here. And because that didn't have a financial deadline on it, it's one of the things unfortunately that just got pushed, but we need to do it. Uh, payroll leave accruals project, which we talked about, road engineering, which is Complete Streets Grant, website updates. Um, the mute, the second floor renovation, the playground, the Bullard House drainage, which is also underway. Senior greeter program, we can talk about again as we get a new social services, uh, COA director. South Commons Pavilion Rec Committee is working on that now that, um, the change was made at town meeting on the location. Biweekly payroll out. I am pleased to report we have internet at the transfer station. This is very exciting. Uh, we finally got Starlink and they actually put their little machine up in the parking lot and they are almost live with Unibank to be able to accept, um, credit card payments too. So that, um, is implemented. The Barnes Hill Road Speed Limit is, the speed limit issue has been on hold. We haven't had any truck traffic issues or concerns there. Brown Barn I'm working on and ALS study. Uh, the chief has been looking into a regional approach and there's not a lot of interest. So, um, the cost to implement is, is prohibitive, doing it ourselves. But he's still trying, especially as new fire chiefs come into these towns. He's been really proactive about it and he's gotten a show but dispatch, supporting it and promoting it too. So we'll see what happens. So.
If you could go through, obviously no immediate rush, but go through and update everything, so you know, we have, um, a better idea of what's there and what's on the list and what we may need to jiggle to say, hey, this has been kicking around since, can you move A up and C down type of thing, or just kill blah, blah, blah. Cause there isn't a need for it anymore. But it's funny how the biweekly payable rollout is on here.
It is. So do you feel as though this list, the second page list, is something that you could have totally accomplished in a year? Or not?
I don't know if this list is our fiscal year twenty-five list, just because we started on fiscal year twenty-four. I think some of them should, I think some of them should drop off. I think there's a couple of new ones I'd like to, us to think about adding.
That was gonna be my question. I think, yes, what's on there for the most part are either, you know, implementable in the next year or done. Um, but I was curious if there were more or new ones.
We tend to overdo it with the goals. So that's why, you know, if we each had one goal or maybe two that we wanted to bring back to discuss, I think that would be reasonable. And then have other things drop off the list. But I mean, when you, when you start doing thirty goals, it isn't gonna happen and, and it hasn't.
And I got, I got fifteen done last year.
Been doing very well with the goals.
Try it.
I mean.
It's hard.
If you wanted, if you wanted to have things that you wanted to be able to accomplish in a year, because every year we look at goals. It's, it's kind of silly.
All right. So then why don't we do this? If we're giving Kristen our input on the buildings, for her to roll up by August twelfth, then in that same email, why don't we all independently say, out of the X that are left, you know, in each of ours humble opinion, wink and blink and a nod can come off. Um, and I would like to put in new wink and blink and a nod or something, so that you can have all our independent feedback.
Okay.
Is this, yeah, is this gonna be updated first before we do that? You want it this updated?
I do want it updated, but I mean, there are some obvious, to me, there are some obvious things that just should just come screaming off this list. I mean, and she just gave us an update. Yeah, we just got the update. I was just talking about it being color-coded, but, um, I would just take the list. And as you're updating it, Kristen, color-coded, done, you know, to be done. And then add in another tab down the bottom that says suggestion to remove, suggestion to add. So we all keep it on one spreadsheet. Those zippy doodle along with that one. All right, uh, next up on the agenda is uh, uh, FY twenty-four line item transfers located under new business.
So these were all just approved at the FinCom meeting, if that's helpful at all. There are four of them. Um, two for fire, one for PD and one for the select board. I can certainly go through them all. Or you can ask me questions, whichever you prefer.
Um, I mean, I looked through them. I thought each one was self-explanatory and I would make a motion to approve them all.
Um, for the recording, if you're watching, could you at least just list them all for us?
I sure can. So we have, um, a fi- fire EMS, um, wages, request to transfer five thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars from fire EMS wages part-time to fire EMS wages full-time for the final payroll due to, uh, additional OT for special town meeting, as well as a couple of very busy weeks at the end of the year. The second fire one is a request to transfer twelve thousand dollars out of fire EMS wages part-time and to fire EMS expenses to cover, uh, we had a number of ALS invoices, um, for paramedic calls. We had to tow the, the fire apparatus unfortunately, which believe it or not was a thousand dollars to have it tow when it broke down. And we need to now fix it and also some EMS supplies. Uh, the PD transfer is one thousand, seven hundred and two dollars from police wages part-time to police wages full-time to fund the final payroll for police due to some additional forced overtime. That was unforeseen, but unfortunately needed. And the last is a whopping five dollars from generously the accountant wages full-time to the select board wages full-time to cover an error in calculation, uh, on a salary to make sure we can make the final FY twenty-four salary payment. And that's it.
You're good with all these? All right, is there a motion to, um, approve all four?
I made that motion.
Second it. All right, uh, thank you for the discussion. Hearing no more. Let us vote. All those in favor? So all that's whizzing around, let us skip down to, uh, discussion on the public comment policy. So Kristen, I don't know if you wanna take the lead on that one, or if everyone has read it and has comments and understand why we're doing it.
Could give you a really brief overview. Um, basically, this is setting forth, um, that at the beginning of most select board meetings, the schedule, the select board will schedule one fifteen-minute public comment period. Uh, folks can sign up in advance or through a signup sheet at the meeting. Um, and preference will be given to those who sign up in advance. Folks cannot use visual aids, videos, or requests that town staff do so unless needed for a reasonable accommodation. We are limited, limiting, uh, maximum time to three minutes per speaker. Um, if the number of people wishing to speak exceeds fifteen minutes, the chair at their sole discretion may limit individual comments to less than three minutes per speaker. And the chair can also defer comments if, to a next meeting, if there are more than can be accomplished in fifteen minutes. We also put in that, um, this should be related to matters under the select board's jurisdiction. Um, and that while we know we cannot prohibit rude or obnoxious speech by speakers, um, we strongly discourage attacks and request that people conduct themselves in a civil and respectful manner. Anyone who wishes to comment on matters outside of the subjects during public comment, um, can also email uh, comments to select board at Town of Berlin, or can send letters in written form if they do not want to make those comments publicly. And that is pretty much the gist of it.
And it's just pretty much what you're seeing that other towns?
So, and this is compliant with the barren, um, decision, which was the big motivating factor for making the change.
So motion to approve?
Oh, and I have had it reviewed by town council.
I, I still don't see it in there where it sort of limits the comment periods to people who actually live or in this town.
You mean, you would like it to say that?
We, we are, we are beholden to the voters of this town and I would like the people who take up these fifteen minutes to be voters of this town. I, I would probably make generous exceptions to children of voters of the town if they had things they wanted. Yeah, that's what I would say residents, even though we're, we're, we're here for the voters, but as residents of the town.
I, I don't know if you, can you do that? I mean, is that?
I am not sure and I apologize. I meant to check on that Scott and I, I will find out.
If someone from, you know, let's say Kansas wanted to have an opinion about where we put telephone poles in this town, just because I don't know, they somehow think that telephone poles are bad for the environment or bad for your health. I, I, I'd be totally fine if a resident of town came with, with those theories, but I don't want someone who's not in the town coming to us, even if that's a matter that is, is before us for public comment.
Well, then I would wait.
Yeah, you better wait until you get an opinion then.
Yeah, and then we'll just.
Contingent on.
Uh, I would rather see it. I'd rather see it in writing.
Alright, I will find that out and I will we'll put it on the next agenda. No, that's my fault. I, I, you had brought that up and it.
Well, and then we'll also need to discuss what we're going to do with it as well. I mean, I see that it's up on the wall. But um, maybe part of the introduction to every meeting can reference people to it, you know, just to say there's a. Yeah. You know, and point them and tell them that it's on the wall, uh, if they have questions on it.
One, one thing to note, if we do change it, sorry, I cut you off. Um, we, you have already approved as chair, a group that is coming to speak from Marlboro. They were supposed to come this evening. They are now coming on the twenty nine. So um, I believe public comment will fall before we approve this policy, but um, just in case the question arises, we should say that perhaps it takes effect August first or.
This was a group that had approached us a while ago, so I think it would be rather stinky if we were all of a sudden to say, hey, here's our new policy, so said you can't come and talk to us. I, I just think that that would go.
What is it, what is this about?
Fairness in voting or voter fraud? That they're a public group that goes around to different towns and just kind of makes a.
So it could be informational.
Could be informational, but they're out of town.
But maybe it's something, you know, there may be something that comes up where we do want to hear that information.
So that's one thing, it just, it would be kind of smelly. Oh, I know. Oh, I know. I know. Alright, uh, so skipping on down to revised visitor code of conduct. Also, oh, it's not on the wall. No, it's not on the wall.
No, it's outside the different offices. For visiting the offices. Or at least that's where they put them when they first put them together.
So, yeah, I put in the old one, which unfortunately I could only find as a scanned copy of the posted one. So um, I did retype it and make some changes to it. Um, and I think the, the main changes I did was I actually put a quote in from the employee policy manual that um, we have, which says town employee, Town of Berlin strives to provide a positive experience. For those visiting, town employees are expected to act honestly, conscientiously, reasonably, in good faith at all times. Um, the town also strives to maintain a workplace that is conducive to personal safety and security and is free from intimidation threats or by, whoops, acts of violence. What did I put violation acts? Let's change that.
Yes, well, no, you have any form of violence.
This was something that didn't it come about because there was some incidents where somebody was coming to the different offices and.
Well, they can do that.
You know.
I did also um, adjust it to say, um, let's see. Expected conduct includes, but is not limited to. And then I listed um, the similar things that were on there before. I did put, it said before, under the influence of any illegal substance. Obviously now marijuana is changed, so I just said anyone appearing to be under the influence of, of any substance. Because I was struggling with, well. I think substance has the connotation that they're impaired and they're, you know. Well, I guess so.
But I think we all might be doing that.
Too much sugar too. I mean, I, I think that bad behavior is bad behavior regardless of whether it's caused by a chemical in your body or not.
Thank you. I could not have said that better. That's, that's exactly what I was getting at.
Were there any other comments or questions, any edits that need to be made to this document?
I thought it was fine.
So did I. Motion to approve.
Um, hearing no other discussion, all in favor? And we will make, I, and we will make this effective when?
Tonight, if you'd like.
Alright, tonight it is. Boom chakalaka. Alright. Skipping on down, uh, discuss possible vote acceptance on a five hundred dollar donation from the Berlin Country Club to our Berlin veterans.
Motion to approve.
I was gonna say, thank you very much.
I know, thank you very much. Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Uh, motion and second, hearing no other discussion. Nope. Alright, all those in favor? Skipping on down, disclosure regarding historical commissioner senior work off participant.
So you have what the state um, attorney of the, the state ethics commission has recommended be filled out because of the potential appearance of a conflict. We have the historical commission chair's husband who wanted to do some work off, uh, senior work off for the commission. Using his photography skills to organize the digital image files in the town's historical collection and assist with the photo presentation. So even though um, the chair would not be, the chair would not obviously be supervising. Um, so Barry Eager would be supervising this process, but because there is a financial interest in the matter and it's immediate family member, a disclosure did need to be filed. That does need to be voted upon by the select board. And what you are voting on is basically to determine that the con, you've reviewed it and you've determined the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of services, which the municipality may expect from the employee.
I think there is no question in town about Marty's photography skills.
These are just the nodding of the eyes.
The dotting of eyes and I, I think it is very appropriate that to come before us, but yes, I uh, having Marty help uh, the historic commission with all their photography stuff, I think would be a great benefit to the town.
Cause they've been wanting to do that for quite a while, haven't they?
I think they had someone who was starting to do that and then that person got uh, sick enough where they couldn't continue and so they got started but not finished.
So we've got a motion and a second.
Alright, hearing no other discussion. Nope, all those in favor?
All three of our signatures, one signature.
I believe it's just, is it the chair?
That's why I didn't sign it in, because it wasn't quite clear.
So then Kristen, thank you uh, to execute the contract with Contact Studios LLC for the second floor uh, renovation design services.
Yes, so if you recall, um, we put this out to bid, as I mentioned in my TA report. Um, you had uh, approved designer selection, a designer selection procedure, which we followed. We had two um, responses to the request for qualifications. And um, the three members of the selection committee independently determined that Contact Studios Inc. Was the most responsive to the request for qualifications. They are willing to provide the design services for fifty two thousand five hundred dollars for the second floor renovation of the public safety complex. So what I would be asking the board to do is to award that uh, contract to Contact Studios LLC and authorize me to execute the contract, just that way I don't have to wait two weeks to bring it back to you.
So motion to um, award the contract to Contact Studios to sign.
Alright, hearing no other discussion, oh, sorry.
This, of course, is, we don't have a design that is to build this, to create a design, correct?
Exactly. We have some conceptual designs, that's it.
And in doing that, they're going to make sure we're not gonna end up with what was called that, so we're having a Frankenstein AC system out of this. They're gonna find a way to make it sort of
And I will make another point of mentioning that to them.
So that was clear, but since that was raised at several degrees, I thought we'd at least say it overtly here that we are aware of that and going to make sure that is not a problem going forward. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Alright, motion in a second. Thank you for the comment. Uh, hearing no other discussions, and all those in favor? Alright. Skipping on down to vote to execute a contract with Howard Stein Hudson for design services for the town center complete street project.
So I did get, um, we got this proposal actually a few months back and I've solicited um, a fair amount of input on it. Um, did get some input from Tim Wheeler, from Evy, from a few folks that are down in that area. One of the recommendations was to do an initial, initial um, you know, upfront uh stakeholders meeting that we'll be doing to give some ideas to guide the um, architects and engineers in what folks are actually thinking would work for that area. So we're not just starting with eight conceptual designs. We can actually narrow it down and then once we get maybe three or four, we can bring them forward and have a full public um, meeting to talk about how this is gonna be. So this is the complete streets grant that we got for five hundred thousand dollars. That you um, just gave me another thirty five hundred dollars for to fund. Um, this is a contract in the amount of one hundred and forty nine thousand dollars to do the design work for that grant. The five hundred thousand unfortunately is only for construction. Um, and then we will need to match some chapter ninety funds to do paving afterwards. But complete streets is all about baking things pedestrian friendly, bike friendly, doing sidewalks, literally making a complete street, if you will. Uh, Howard Stein Hudson is on the list of preferred vendors with Mast DOT, so we did not have to go out to bid for this, which made life a lot easier. But um, those stakeholders I mentioned, as well as the highway superintendent and myself went through this and combed through it, made some changes to it. And so I present to you the final proposal. And again, my request would be to execute a contract with Howard Stein Hudson in the amount of one hundred and forty nine thousand dollars using ARPA funding for design services for the town center complete streets project, and if you could authorize me to sign that contract as well.
So we want to award the contract to Howard Stein Hudson for the design services for the town center complete street project. And give uh, Kristen the ability to sign the contract on our behalf.
Cause it's over fifty thousand, so I need your authority.
Whichever one I need to be doing.
Alright, so motion in a second. Lots of discussing here. You know, the discussion on this, we'll move for a vote. All those in favor? So, uh, this is where I kind of skippered out of the room. Sorry for that again, apologies for our uh, consul general of Germany to visit the four New England states that have a Berlin in it. And I don't know where we lie, if we're her first Berlin visit or her last Berlin visit. Um, but I thought Dee and I were chatting and just thought it'd be kind of cool to have a proclamation, uh, you know, for Dr. Krevich and apologies if I've totally butchered her name um, for that. But the plan is for her to come on the twenty fifth to meet around ten o'clock at the town hall. We'll have a few light refreshments. Uh, I'll pick up some coffee. June was gonna make some tea. Janet Woodward was gonna make some um, homemade treats from Cordelia's Farm. I've talked to historical, uh, reached out to, you know, various people around town, talked to the item. Um, Dee said that she would be more than happy to just send something out to all departments. It's a very informal chat, why are we Berlin and not Berlin and any other similar similarities that we have with Berlin, Germany and any stories that we could share with her. So extremely informal, there is zero agenda. I have asked historical not to lay into a, in our diatribe history lesson, so I will keep uh, an eye on that as well, so.
And, and is there an invitation to certain people?
What do you mean?
Did you want Scott or?
That's why I was just gonna put it out to, to everyone tonight to say, this is the date, this is the time. If you can come, I will put it on our unofficial pages. Um, Dee, I'm sure in her wonderful words of wisdom can come up with something for our formal page. She's smiling at me, okay.
Are you gonna send something to us too, so that I can remember the date?
And it will be in the first floor uh, of the town hall in that room that no one can get into that I'm sorely lacking on the number, name of the hall. Memorial Hall, thank you. So, cause that has, you know, pictures of town people and other cool things, so we thought that that would be the best.
And the date was again?
Twenty fifth, which is next Thursday. Yes, next Thursday at ten AM. So I will meet her. Kristen was kind enough to pass along her contacts name, um, so I'll reach out to her and tell her that I'll meet her outside and bring her on in. And so for goodies, we have, uh, Dee again was kind enough to find um, a Boston cane pin, so I wrote something up uh, for that, so Dee put it on nice letterhead. So we'll get that printed. We have a Berlin historical bicentennial cookbook. We've got a mug. We've got a pin, we've got some magnets, historical found something, a tile. It was all wrapped up. It's nice and purty. Thought I could give her a town report, you know, from this year.
Grab a couple from downstairs.
I've got one in my bag. I stole it off of Dee's desk. Um, so just a small takeaway, it's nothing of huge value, but something for her to remember Berlin mass.
Yeah, and um, thank you for doing all of that. I am not only notoriously the worst event planner on the planet. Um, but I also will be away next week, so.
So are you, are you gone all of next week?
I am.
Yes, that's on my list.
We have MC.
MC Stone on that, so. So I didn't know if you wanted to, Dee said that she was gonna do some research on it. Do we bother to put one together? It would require all three of our signatures. We are not meeting again before she comes next Thursday, so that would require the three of us to skippey on down and sign it.
Or we could do electronics, something pretty scrawly font.
Electronic pretty scrawly font would be my best signature that I've ever done, so.
Alright, so pretty scrawling versus uh, Scott's signature. Alright, so uh, any discussion, further discussion on that? Just again, it's, it's little, little takeaways that maybe she'll put up in her office, you know, to remember Berlin. And I did find um, I may bring my laptop, uh, if you remember years ago, Peter McHegan from Chronicle came to Berlin and had a chit chat with Barry about it, so I found that and I'll pull up the link. It's what, two minutes long, if that. Um, and I know that uh, some people in historical are also reaching out to some other people that were involved in the Berlin Exchange students uh, that were here many, many years ago. So I figure if I just blast it wide enough, there might be more people around that have stories that could come in.
Tim Wheeler, I think.
James is actually still in touch with one of the students that was here, so that's kind of cool. Alright, so can I get a motion and a potential vote on that?
Some.
For all the, what, what are we voting on?
On the, on a proclamation for.
Okay, you said some move? Second.
Alright, uh, no other further discussion, all those in favor? Dee, if you can let me know, I'll swing down and pick it up. It'd be awesome. And then our last one, we had a revised, uh, whoops, we missed this on the original agenda of another twenty five appointment, or was that for uh, FEMA?
It's just the rest of the appointments, because some of them were needed a little research.
So it's not on the agenda?
No, it is. It's on the agenda. It was a late add. That's why there was a revision date and a time.
No, I guess they printed it out before then.
Thought we did a vote a couple of years ago, we didn't have to reappoint all our police officers every year to save us this exact vote. Did we not do that?
We could, we um, had some challenges with the prior spreadsheet, so we are working on putting together our own. Um, and that's very possible you did. Oh, he did, okay.
Who did?
Specifically asked for those appointments, so.
So let's put them on.
So, oh, oh, is this, so who, I, I don't, I didn't even look because I didn't have it on.
Chief of Police, Police Sergeant, Sergeant, Full-Time Officer, Part-Time Officer, Special Officer, Sexual Harassment Officer, Forest Warden, Our Official Fire Housedog, Town Accountant and Warden.
Why don't we just say um, motion to appoint the list that was. Motion to appoint the list that was. Yeah.
Alright, motion and a second. Hearing no other discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright. Next up is board questions, leads on updates.
Yeah, nothing.
As you say, I'm good. My brain is mush.
Okay, the only one thing that I have, um, Kristen, on your vacation time, if you could formally send an email just to all of us. Um, when you're taking time and in a discussion that I had with Kristen. Once again, we get the, it's only a staycation. I'm around if you need me. To Mitch, my response was, you're on PTO, you heard us the first time. There is nothing that the three of us. Plus June, plus anybody else downstairs can't take, I know, see, I'll just throw you into the pot. Cause it's a big pot, throw you into the pot.
There's lots of room.
There's lots of room in the pot, that there isn't anything that all of us can't take care of, which would require a phone call to Kristen. Cause again, vacation time, you're not taking it, you need to take it. Don't. That's why she asked, do you want me to come in for the, for um the consulate? And I said, no, we got it. Done. So.
Agreed.
Much appreciated. And yes, I will, uh, just so you know, I also intend to take the the week of Labor Day. And that's an annual thing. We go to Block Island. So other than that, um, unless it's a few hours here or there, there, I should be here.
Yeah, alright. And your half days, you said you were taking half days?
I I had taken some, some partial days, a few hours here and there.
More?
I I will.
And you'll email us when you're taking those days? So if anyone's looking for you, we know.
Sure.
That you're off.
That we'll leave you alone.
I can do that.
That's the only thing that I had was just to make, yeah, Kristen, vacation time is vacation time. And again. This town has been through enough instances where there are people here who can take care of them, so there is no need for you to. Do one email, which will lead to ten, and one hour, which will lead to four, so.
No, I appreciate that. And I heard that message loud and clear to work on that work-life balance and take the time, so that is what I am trying to do.
And next time we'll take your laptop, so then you won't be able to do anything.
My keys to the building, everything.
We can do that.
That's my personal phone too, so I'd be really in trouble.
I know, but I, I'll show you what you can do to like make work emails not sync to your personal phone.
That's true.
Ooh, alright, alright. If there, there is no need for an executive session, so our next meeting is.
Twenty nine.
July twenty ninth. Alright, uh, is there a motion to dismiss?
So moved.
I get it.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, skippey doo. Thank you.